All right, we'll bring this back into session at 7:18. And it looks like we will, there's no committee reports. And we'll move on to public hearing.
Thank you. This is the public hearing portion of our meeting. Item F1 is to adopt resolution 19/20-22 amending the district fee schedule for the Cordova Recreation and Park District.
All right, we'll call the public hearing to order at 7:18.
And I'll turn it over to Director Nuns.
So this time last year, I was up here presenting our district-wide fee schedule, the first one that I know of that the districts had. So it's been a good year, but we have a couple of fees that we do need to modify. We've got some new fees, we've got some fees that we want to eliminate, and then just some fees that we need to change. So I'll go through all of those, and if you have any questions, certainly let me know. So on your handout, Danielle said that you guys have a color handout? Okay, awesome. So on page one, we have our first fees. So you can see, I need to put line items on here, but we have aquatics. We are going to be eliminating the eight lessons for the private lessons, and we're going to add in the four lessons of private lessons at 25 minutes. And that's just going to help us, you know, modify some of those lessons, shorter, you know, shorter lessons, hoping to get more of the swimmers involved with four lessons instead of eight lessons. So that's the private, so we're eliminating one and then adding the next one. Down a couple of lines is some fee changes and some eliminations for the swim team clinics for the Blue Marlins as well as the swim team clinics for the Cordettes. Nothing is going away, we're still going to have those clinics, but what we're doing is just putting a different range in there so we can offer more of a variety for those clinics. Both the Blue Marlins and the Cordettes have been made aware and have been part of these changes, so it'll just help them throughout the year be able to put on different types of clinics and camps and what have you. Okay? So that's it for the aquatics. Then we go down to the parks and facilities, and we have facilities, the Hagan Community Center Building One. We're just adding in there a different range, we're going to go from 50 to $135, and that's so we can rent out the patio space. We do rent out that space, but we haven't put it in the fee schedule before, so that'll be in there since that patio space is pretty popular outside of Hagan Building One. If you go onto page two, we have facilities, we have the Mather Sports Center, the drop-in entrance fee. What this is, is we'd like to increase the student drop-in entrance fee from $1.50 to $2. So, pretty normal standard change there, but nothing else. Down towards the bottom of page two, you've got another parks and facilities, district-wide, the special use permits that we have. Our parks are becoming very, very, very popular, so we want to go ahead and extend out the maximum that we are charging. So we have the minimum of $50 up to about $2,000. We're getting some pretty large events that are coming in, so we're just, you know, extending that out a little bit further so we can accommodate some of the requests. Stay on page two, the golf course. Not too many changes, I promise. So the big change that we want to make is for the power carts, our new carts. Yay! So right now, we, there's fees, it's $7, sometimes it's $10, I don't know, they're all over the place. So what we'd like to propose is that for nine holes, each rider will pay $10, no matter what time of day it is, no matter if it's a weekend or a weekday. You're just going to play, pay one standard rate if you're playing nine holes for $10, if you're playing 18 holes, $15. Simple, easy, clean. And again, that's whether you're playing or not, so if you're a rider, you would also have to pay that fee. Okay? Hand pull carts, right now we just charge a standard rate of $3. Again, we're going to keep that $3 for the nine holes, but then we want to make it $5 for 18 holes. It's a little bit more wear and tear on the cart.
Excuse me, so if they bring their own hand thing, you, they can, they don't, you don't charge them?
They don't, nope, we don't charge them. Yep, you can't bring your own power cart, but you can bring your own hand cart, yeah. Yeah, but we don't charge them for that.
You can use rollers, you can use roller skates instead of golf shoes.
You absolutely can, yes. Okay, so for the, the green fees for juniors, that's actually not a change, it just for some reason wasn't in there, so I went ahead and cleaned that up. But right now, we are charging between $5 and $21 for the green fees for the juniors. And then you see the red there, those discounts, those multi-play discounts, we're just eliminating those. We already have an affordable golf course, we don't need to deepen that discount any, any further. We, it's very affordable, and a couple of them, we couldn't even find anywhere that they were in the system that we were offering those discounts. So we're going to eliminate those three discounts from the golf course. Again, clean, easy fees, so people know exactly what they're paying.
So a quick question on that, Jill, is what, what would you do, or how long would you say if someone came and said, "Well, I have a multi, I paid for a, you know, this multi-discount regular." I mean, I guess maybe there should be an announcement and say, "At the end of this point..."
Yeah, good question. So they do have expiration dates on them?
Oh, good.
So as soon as they expire, then obviously they're done. We did let the senior group know that we were going to be expiring those discounts, and so they, they knew a heads up that this was, you know, something that we were proposing.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, can I interrupt for just a second? Is this the appropriate time for these questions? In a public, should you just be, she be presenting?
It's just clarification.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
She asked a few questions.
Yeah, I mean, we have a, I thought there was a present the item, the public has a chance to speak, and then the board has a chance to ask their question.
Okay, if you'd like that.
So I just want to make sure.
Just clarification.
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I'm asking, is this the appropriate time for that, Clerk Jones, or?
I think it's fine.
Okay, just want to make sure, that's all.
So really good question. We'll be informing everybody if the, if the fees, when the fees get approved tonight, we'll make sure that we get that information out, you know, to all of our golf course users. The last one there in the golf course is blue, and that's an add. That's just, again, since we haven't run the camps and the clinics and the lessons in the past, we needed to get that in there for that range now that we'll be operating the lessons at the golf course. All right, so on page three, under programs, we have the Neil Orchard Senior Activity Center, the Get Up &amp; Go Trips. Again, the range was 30 to 800, we want to lower that to 20 to 800, and that's because Heather and her staff would like to perhaps have some smaller trips where we don't need those big passenger, you know, cargo, cargon, whatever those buses are called, cargo buses. We just want to be able to do those vans, maybe even use our own van if we need to for a senior trip. So we're just lowering that to $20. Passenger van, passenger bus.
Coach.
Coach, that's the word, thank you. All right, the last fee, again, is on page three. It's the preschool, Hagan Community Center in White Rock. This is the STEM program that we created for this year. It wasn't in the fee schedule for last year. We do have in our fee schedule the pilot programs and the range, but since this is now a program that is operating and going, I wanted to make sure that I got it in there. So $2,400. You know, Director Leinbach had asked a question, can people, you know, pay throughout the year? Yes, they can. Can they come in late? So if they don't get in at the beginning of the year, they can come in later on during the year. So the $2,400 is if they were to be a part of the program year-round, or for the whole school year.
Oh, right.
Yep, so it's prorated depending upon when they join the program, whether it's preschool or the STEM program. So, with that, that concludes my presentation. Do you have any questions?
All right, anybody from the public have any questions? All right, seeing none, we will close the public hearing at 7:27. All right, are there any questions from the board?
Just a clarification, I looked at it and was like, huh? On the, sorry, Hagan Community Center, Building Number One, the fee was 85 to 135, and now it's 50 to 135, and you said so that then you could add the pavilion, but?
The patio.
The patio, so, so that $50, even though it's less, that's just the fee if they rent only the patio?
You got it.
Okay, thank you.
Exactly.
Was that what you were charging before without a fee, or were they paying the 85?
They're paying the 50, it just wasn't put in there.
Okay. All right, anyone else have any questions? All right, anybody care to make a motion?
I'm of the Board of Directors, adopt resolution 19/20-22, amending the district fee schedule for the Cordova Recreation and Park District.
All right, motion by Vice Chair Danzel, seconded by Director Reyes, real call vote.
Director Reyes?
Aye.
Director Leinbach?
Aye.
Secretary Sloan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel?
Aye.
Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
If I could just thank you and your staff, this is awesome. I mean, I know, like we said, we haven't had it since you started it, but not only the way you gave it to us and provided it to us, but a lot of work went into this, and I love your color coding, it makes it so much easier. But thank you, I think it, it looks good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely, wonderful.
Thanks.
The red and the black, can't read it. All right, so that'll bring us into the regular calendar, there isn't a regular calendar, so we'll move on to Board of Directors items.
Thank you. Item H1A is for training, and there was none during this last period, so we move on to item H1B, Board Member Community Activities and Meetings Report.
All right, excellent, we will, doesn't look like Director Reyes, you don't have anything to report, so we'll move on to Director Leinbach.
Okay, so I did attend the White Rock Park Community Outreach Meeting that Sergeant Vow was at on August 28th. I thought there was a pretty good turnout from, you know, the residents, you know, surrounding the park. I think whatever concerns they had that they had brought to you, they felt, you know, very strongly had been addressed, that the park was much nicer to walk around, and they were not seeing the problems. And so I think they were quite happy with the response. They almost were like, "You people are all here, but you've already fixed the problem, so why are you people all here?" So they seemed very happy. I did attend the Rosemont Community Association meeting on September 5th, and at that meeting, we just, you know, made the people there aware of the Promos Park Community Meeting that's going to be, I believe, September 20, it's next week, okay, thank you. Someday next week, next Tuesday, okay, I will be there. And I also gave them the information about that castle, I can't remember the name of the project that they were concerned about from the prior meeting, about the parks, the lack of park space in that development, which is actually in the Larchmont Riviera area, not in the Rosemont area, but they had heard about it, they were concerned about an infill project that didn't have any park space for a rather large infill project, but, so they were kind of relieved to know the Park District had already been aware of that, and had already, you know, inserted their comments about the need for a park. I don't think there was a formal protest, right, there was just a request to talk about park space. And lastly, I did finally attend a meeting of the Redevelopment Agency Oversight Board, and the reason why I say that is because the last two meetings were canceled, so we haven't met since January. And the reason for that meeting is kind of, falls under be careful what you ask for, because they asked for $10,000 to secure a vacant property that was owned by the Redevelopment Agency, and the Finance Department of the State thought that that was an excessive request, so they pared it down to $2,000. So then the Redevelopment Agency went through a whole process. It's, I won't mention the parcel because it's involved in a lawsuit right now, so that itself was closed session, but for reasons that I won't talk about here, the property had to be highly secured, and so instead of the original $10,000 request, which they tried to pare down to $2,000, it turned into $103,000 request to secure that property. This thing, you know, if you'd only given them the $10,000. But at any rate, the other thing I did mention was the cancellation of the meetings. It was clear from that particular item that there'd been letters going back and forth, and it was the first time we'd ever heard of it. And I felt like the Redevelopment Agency itself was not, you know, giving the board what the board needed for oversight, that they were really just trying to get the board to approve payments and go away, we don't want to talk about other stuff. And I had been concerned that the previous two meetings had been canceled, and one of the comments that the Finance Department put within the body of their response about the price of the securing that property was that they felt the Redevelopment Agency, I mean, I'm sorry, that the Oversight Board should be committing, performing more oversight over this stuff. And, and it sort of solidified for me that they weren't really, they were canceling the meetings, and you, what do you do, the meeting's canceled, you can't go, you know? So I hope they heard that, I hope that they'll treat it more like an oversight body rather than just a second signature on a check or something, you know, approve these payments and go home. That's my report.
All right, thank you. All right, Secretary Sloan?
On August 27th, I attended the BRECA Steering Committee Meeting. I wanted to inform you that the little library is doing well, flourishing. And there was a couple items that came up regarding the parks. One being, BRECA was asking the support of the CRPD on some dedicated parkland that supposedly 198 homes are being built on, on Folsom Boulevard. And so, and I, at my meeting with Mr. Larkin, he informed me that this was city property. So I think they're just asking for our support with communications with the city, because I think they would like to see some park land in that area.
It's the CASIS development that we discussed, and it's, we have made our formal comments back to the City of Renter Cordova, who is asking for comments related to that development. So it's the same exact development that Director Leinbach was just referring to as well.
Oh, okay. And next thing was mentioned about the SAC3 Foundation that they would like to do some more work out at our Larchmont Riviera East Park, with some maybe mulching or, and adding trees. So they'll probably be approaching you, or Jay's going to approach you. Next, there was September 3rd, I attended the Renter Cordova Athletic Association Meeting. And there's a lot on the, on the agenda that, that night that concerned the parks. One issue was, well, I was told that the, the Blue Marlins were storing some, using one of the buildings at the Hagan Pool for some of their equipment, and now that it's torn down, that they needed a, she's renting a storage unit, and now she's going to get a seater, and now they're looking for property to put the seater on. But I have heard difference, that they weren't storing stuff at the Hagan, but I, I don't know. But that's one, one item. Another item was the wooden benches at Allstrom Park on the major field, a major maintenance issue. And so they're going to get money from the, from the enhancement program to get metal replaced with all aluminum metal benches, and they're asking for the Park District to remove them, or take them away, or do away with them, I believe. So, or move them to the school property.
The staff have not gotten that report yet, so I will wait for the appropriate bodies to let us know if that's what their request is.
And I suggest that it be formally written letter, because otherwise what happens is we take it off, and then everyone else say, "Why are you doing that?", you know? That's true.
And a really exciting thing happened, one of the members of the RCA, who attends the meetings, he's really into cross-country and, and track and field, and he's really got a lot of passion and energy, and he was talking about how, he, he's already mapped out a course at Dave Roberts Park for cross-country tournament. He said these tournaments can gross up to $75,000. So that's something that I think they're going to, I think Chase Michelletti was there also, and he's brought that information to District Administrator Larkin, or GM Larkin.
Manager.
And so that's exciting, I think, and they also talked about having these at golf courses. Hagan Oaks does it on their golf course. So it might be something when the slow time of the year, that they could have like a tournament on it. Who knows? I think that'd be exciting to me, to see that kind of a use of our properties. And that's all.
Thank you, Secretary Sloan. Vice Chair Danzel didn't have anything to report out. The only thing I have to report out on is the White Rock Park Community Outreach Meeting. It was a well-attended meeting, well-received. I know from going out when it first kind of became an issue, it was night and day, the park looked a lot better. The, so yeah, I mean, it really, we, we addressed the issue, the police addressed the issue, I think the folks were very happy, and we're going to continue working on that and making sure we don't have issues like that again. So it was a very well, a very nice, very nice, and it was nice to have the police out there and the community asking all kinds of great questions, so. That is all I have to say on that, so I guess we will move on to item H2.
We have nothing on item H2.
All right, so I guess we'll move on to item I.
Thank you. Item I1 is the District-Wide Monthly Progress Report for September 2019, and I'll turn it over to General Manager Larkin.
Thank you. Some highlights from the past month. The staff reviewed the proposed joint use agreement with San Juan Unified School District. We, Jill and I met with the representatives from the school district. We reviewed their proposal for a joint use agreement, and the only school that it impacts is Discovery School in Gold River Park primarily. So we had some good discussions about the condition of Gold River Park. It has definitely suffered some major impacts due to the use of the school, in addition to some soccer groups that are out there as well. So we're working out an agreement with them to supplement the maintenance for that particular field so that we can keep it at a standard that the community expects and that our standards meet. The joint use agreement now has gone to our lawyer for a review, and we'll be bringing it to the board in October for your approval. So that's a, a good news, we have two joint use agreements in one year accomplished, and then after that, the plan would be for us to start building the relationship with El Grove Unified School District, and starting in that direction. We facilitated the first Friends of Cordova Parks, Inc. board meeting this past month, and they were a very eager group, they're highly active. We're looking forward to their elections in October. The elections will be for President, Vice President, Treasurer, and Secretary. They discussed the name of the foundation, and staff and I, Jill and I, are going to be looking into how we go about looking at changing the name to a foundation name that they're requesting we look into. So more to come on that, and look for them to come to a future meeting to discuss the bylaws that they're reviewing at this time, current, and also proposed, and then we'll present, the President most likely will present that to this board. We hosted the White Rock Community Park Neighborhood Outreach Meeting. I thought that was really just a really good point in time to reflect on our partnerships, especially with the PD, and how helpful they've really truly been with responding to us and including us in their plans to help make sure that the parks are safe, and I'm just thrilled that we're at that point where we're invited to the table to discuss how we can work together to make sure that the community feels safe in the parks that we have. Hagan Park improvements are occurring, the old pool buildings are knocked down. Woohoo! It's flattened, it's dust, it's done. And actually, today they poured the concrete for the pathways, and so we're really moving along now. The dredging project had a bit of a delay, we have a electrical situation we need to work on first, and then once that's secured, we'll move forward with the dredging project, so. More to come on that. And then Friday, I'll be a speaker at the Renter Cordova luncheon, and I'll be giving an update on the pool project, as well as Hagan Community Park improvements and other accomplishments and projects that we've been working on in the district, so I'm looking forward to that. In the Clerk of the Board, some district policy standing committees will be meeting September 30th. Community outreach meetings have been scheduled for Primrose Park on September 24th, and Fetterfield Park on October 29th. The next meeting for the PRMID Oversight Committee is scheduled for November 5th, Bonnie. So we are looking forward to getting rolling with the, and Sandy. We're looking forward to getting rolling on the proposed plans associated with next year's plan for using the Measure J or the My Parks Fund. Yes. So in budget, Hagan Community Park projects are all activated, as I mentioned, parking and accessibility, demolition of storage facilities, and the window blind replacements in Building Two were completed. They're meeting with Motivational Systems, Inc. to discuss real estate advertisement policy and agree upon a rental amount for the development signs located on the center property. So Matt was great, and following up after the last meeting with the approval of that policy, reaching out to the real estate investors that are already located on that property, and he's striking a deal for us to start collecting rent. Do you want to maybe go a little bit further as to kind of where we're at with that, so they have a, an idea of how you are so amazing to negotiate this stuff?
Yeah, so we're going to go with one company to manage the whole process, and then they will handle all the different developers, the D.R. Hortons and the Lenars, and, and so they will make sure that all the signs on the boards are in proper, proper places and abide by our regulations, as well as the county and the cities. And then we just have an agreed-upon amount that, depending upon how many agreements they have, that we get that rent kicked back to us. And so it could be anywhere from $10,000 to $20,000 a year that we're looking at on that property, just to have signs on it, so it's wonderful.
Wonderful.
Thank you, Matt Caddell.
Yeah.
Excellent job. Meeting with the Calpers to review a new pension contribution pre-funding trust. It allows organizations to invest in an interest-bearing account and apply the trust towards future unfunded liability payments and/or regular payroll pension contributions. I will research this a little further and bring forth the idea to the board for the fiscal year 2020, 2021, if it is viable. So we're working in that direction to figure out if that could be a benefit that we could possibly look to offer the employees. Also, underway in construction is the Rosemont Community Improvements, and so with this Saturday's Celebrate Rosemont, the construction is not going to impact this event, it's on the opposite side, but it is going, and I'm happy about that. Inspector Biondo is assisting Park Services with implementing the dredging of the Hagan ponds, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to Director of Parks and Recreation, Jill Nuns.
Thank you. So yeah, the dredging of the ponds should start this Friday. We, John Biondo, amazing John Biondo, was able to talk the contractor into dredging all three ponds. Originally, it was only supposed to be that, that pond by, you know, by the school, closest to the school, but he got them to do all three, so that's going to be fantastic. Heron Landing Community Park, the soccer field, if you've been out there, is not holding up too well. So Jim Morales and his staff went ahead and put some, a hybrid of Bermuda grass onto that field, and we're going to see if it takes. So you might see some differences with that soccer field as compared to the other grass that's at Heron Landing, but the, the, the impact of the soccer, unfortunately, the grass is just not holding up, so we're going to try something different, see if it takes. We might need to close down the field for a little while, fence it off, close it down, but we'll make sure that we know, let the community know, as well as the user groups of that soccer field. But let's see if the seed takes first. Obviously, right now's not a great time to be growing grass, so we'll really know in the spring if it takes or not, but I wanted to make you guys, make you guys aware of, of that.
This is, you know, right in the middle of the soccer season, and that's the field, that's my son's home field, Heron Landing.
We're not taking the field down, we might need to take it down in the spring, right now, yeah, yeah. Sorry, thanks for the clarifications.
And I don't know, and I guess you, you heard about the, the light issues out there? Because my son's game was at 6:30. Because my son's game was at 6:30 PM, started at 6:40. At halftime, and they were in the dark.
So Chase has been in contact with Frank, and they're working through that.
Thank you.
Yeah, so my apologies. So the Heron Landing soccer field is open right now. I should have clarified that if we need to close it down, it would be in the spring to help the grass grow a little bit more. My apologies.
Can I ask a quick question? How many organizations are using that field? Is it just Rancho Cordova soccer?
No, we have an adult soccer league that is out there on Sundays, and then we have intermittent use throughout.
Okay. It's probably those adults ripping it up. Speaking from experience.
Unfortunately, if you do go out to Heron Landing, Patrick and I visited just a few weeks ago. There's just, it's unfortunate, but there's just a lot of rocks within, you know, that soil. And now they're coming more and more to the surface, and so it's really destroying that grass, and so it's really a hard impact. And, you know, these organizations are being really mindful of the field, but, you know, we, we might need to look at, at doing something different instead of just seeding it. So let's see if the seed takes. Hopefully, we don't have to close down the field in the spring. If the seed takes, we'll just keep making it, you know, getting it to be thicker. If not, then, you know, we'll chat about some different options for that field so we can get it back up and running. Yeah. Aquatic season is obviously officially over. The Lincoln Village Pool as well as White Rock, White Rock Splash Park is closed for the season. The other splash pads and parks are open to the end of this month. Had a good year, though. So can't wait for the Cordova Community Pool to come online so we can increase the number of swimmers within our community. Cordova Golf Course, as you all probably already know, the new golf carts have arrived. Yay! They're absolutely wonderful. It is night and day from the old carts. They actually stop, they actually go. It's kind of crazy. The logos haven't come in yet, so they're on the way for the logos, to put the logos on the hood of the golf carts. But, I mean, we were all there, I mean, Marco, myself, some other staff members were there when the carts came in, and you should have seen just the energy of people playing golf, like it just went so high. They were so excited for the golf carts. So thank you for approving that lease and allowing us to get those new carts. It's, it's a good step in the right direction for the Cordova Golf Course. We've aerated the greens, that's the first time this has happened in a very, very, very long time. So aerated greens really are going to help with the future of our golf course as well. So kudos to Vijay and his staff for getting those greens finally aerated. We have a new website, so I encourage you to go on to the Cordova Golf Course website. It's beautiful, it's absolutely beautiful. So we launched that, it was supposed to be the first week of September, had a little minor delay, but the, the website is, is launched. Go there, it's cordovagc.com. We're also right now running a promo at the golf course of, you know, buy one round, get one for free, encouraging people to go out and see all the improvements at the golf course, enjoy those new golf carts, and get onto our, our new website and, and book a tee time.
Do you know how that program's working? Because it ends this Sunday.
We just extended it to the 30th.
Oh, you did?
It's been okay, not as popular as I thought it would be. So we're going to do some additional promotions for it. You'll see at the neighborhood event this weekend at Rosemont, we're going to do some advertising for the golf cart course and have those buy one, get one free coupons there as well, since Rosemont backs right up to the golf course. It's kind of a no-brainer.
Are you going to bring a golf cart over so they can see it?
No.
Drive it on over, come on.
Not a bad idea.
Not a bad idea, you should have one out there for them. Come on.
We could drive it over there, right?
But the golf course, once word gets out, it's going to, it's going to spread. And then people are going to start flocking there, and it'll be, soon it'll be a wait to get on the course.
Yeah, there you go.
We're hoping so. Then we have a new ball picker, and it's, yeah, so the changes are just amazing. We've kind of redesigned where the carts are being dropped off now and returned and where, how we're renting them, I mean, you know, leasing, renting them out and how people are signing off. It's just, we've made a whole bunch of changes already, and they're all positive. And you're right, it's just the word of mouth, getting it out there. The energy is really high at the golf course, the conditions of the greens are really good. So we'll just keep making those improvements. And I finally have some, let's just call them some little bites on the restaurant concessionaire. So I'm hoping that I can hook one of them pretty soon here and come back and report to you and, and get your approval for our next concessionaire. So fingers crossed, got a couple of bites, but no proposals yet, so. And then the last thing is, want to give a little shout out to Katie Nagy Chow again for her blog, The Celebration of Life for Calvin Augusta. It's, she started this blog a few months ago. And for this blog, she had 563 views, which is the most she's had on the blog. So great job by Katie, she's an excellent writer. She really captured this story and told, you know, about the life of Calvin and some of the struggles, and so I appreciate Katie doing that. And that's the end of my report.
All right, great. Any questions, or are we okay to move on? All right, it looks like we're going to move on to item J, informational items.
So I'll quickly go over the board invitation page for you. It's page 86 in your packet. This weekend, September 21st, is the Rosemont Annual Community Celebration from 9 to 1 at Rosemont Community Park. We have, we talked about the Primrose Park Playground Community Outreach Meeting, that's on Tuesday, September 24th at 6:00 PM at the park site. The Mad Hatters Tea Party on Saturday, October 5th at the Senior Center at 2:00 PM. And Halloween at Hagan on Saturday, October 26th at 4:30.
All right. All right. All right, are we ready to move on?
Sure.
All right. Oh, looks like, ah, item K, closed session.
I am going to be checking with the board on a couple of items we talked about for our calendar, just the Rancho Cordova luncheon this Friday, the Primrose Outreach, the Fetterspil Outreach, October 29th, and then the BRECA Potluck on September 28th. So I'll be checking with you all just for your attendance on those. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, item K1, closed session is liability claim pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.9. Claimant is Jared Seymour. Agency claimed against is the Cordova Recreation and Park District.
All right, well, recess to closed session at 7:55.